June 17, 2025. And we'll have the flags. Thank you. Item two. Roll call, please. Oh, we're all getting that. Siskiyou Police Department.
Uh-oh.
Oh.
What did we have happening?
I don't know.
Well, let's start with roll call. Let's see if we can get this meeting underway.
I know. I hope this emergency.
Commissioner Cohen? Absent. Commissioner Higera?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
McDowell? We can't hear you very well.
Commissioner McDowell?
Oh, that helps. That helps.
Commissioner Partey?
Here.
Commissioner Sarion? On the phone.
Oh, yeah.
He's here.
Here. I was listening to.
Chair Finley.
And I'm here also. So noted, we have. Is it a test?
No, they're on the lookout for a six-foot-three guy with long gray hair and blue jeans.
Oh.
He's on the lookout around the city park. Avoid the area.
Oh, that's comforting.
Maybe we should shut the doors.
Should we shut the door? Can we shut the doors?
Shut it anyway from the standpoint of air conditioning just blowing out.
Thank you. At least slow him down. Be on the lookout, person.
I didn't get a phone call.
Really?
What did he do?
They didn't say.
Do they?
Some gray-haired guy.
They didn't say like, they didn't say shelter in place.
No.
No. Okay. I didn't get them to notice.
Oh, that's unnerving. Well, you wouldn't because you're out of the city, maybe.
He was assaulting individuals with a knife. He was assaulting them with a knife.
Oh. What? Okay, maybe. Do you have the key? What kind of? He was assaulting people with a knife.
I just saw the shirt.
Yeah, we got cops and everybody down there. I think we're safe.
Yeah, we're good.
There's fire, police, and breathing.
Okay, well, just, you know.
Maybe Alan's going to take care of it.
All right, sorry, folks. Item number three. A public comment. This is a time set aside for folks to address the planning commission on matters not on our agenda this evening. You've got three minutes to speak, and please introduce yourself.
Can you hear me? I want to be booming.
I don't hear you very well.
Yeah. Speak up louder.
How about now? No one's ever told me to speak up. You guys will be sorry for that. My name is Julie DeCarlo, and I dropped into Jeff Mitchum's life like Dorothy dropping into Munchiganland, only I did not land on Wicked Witch of the East. I knew I was going to be involved in creating an intentional, intergenerational community, but to be honest, I thought I would be doing that in Metro Detroit. But I'm supposed to build it here, so off I went to obtain the wicked witch of the West broom to lay at the city's feet and have been joined by David Wright, architect out of Nevada City, California; Erin Linden, expert in serving vulnerable populations in grant writing out of Philadelphia; Patricia Carreras, legal counsel here in Mount Shasta; Reinhard Eschbach, developer out of Detroit, Michigan; Julie DeCarlo, CPA and former CFO for a major automotive supplier out of Detroit, Michigan; and a licensed builder yet to appear. The overall plan is to form a 501(c)(3) that partners with the developer to build intentional communities in three phases. One, a community for young women and seniors. Two, a community for single parents. Three, a self-sufficient community for men, women, and children of any age. Phase one is targeted for the Eugene Street parcel, a 1.3-acre micro-community consisting of 400-square-foot stacked tiny homes on foundations with the density to be optimal for the site, providing 25% or more affordable, single-person residences. Development will provide common garden, recreation, parking, and gathering spaces. Aesthetics to be craftsman-style residences compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and village character of Mount Shasta. The owner slash developer will work closely with neighbors, the Chamber of Commerce, and the city of Mount Shasta to create a housing development in harmony with the city master plan and future of the city. In closing, I would like to quote Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed individuals can change the world. In fact, it's the only thing that ever has. Together, we can be that group. If you agree, I am open to meeting with you to discuss my next steps to get the concept drawing for your review. I'm also ready to purchase the Eugene Street land. I just need to know that we are going to work together on this creation. So I thank you for listening, and that's kind of my plan. Jeff's kind of seen it, but if you, anyone wants to talk with me further, I'm happy to do it. I just, like I said, dropped in on him with no team, and now I got a team behind me. So if the planning is interested in the city, I'm ready to move forward. Everyone's in place, ready to go, but I also understand if that doesn't happen that way. But I just wanted to come and introduce myself versus just on email. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Just for the record, when, this isn't an agendized item tonight, so we won't take any action on it, and the next steps are through our planner. So thank you so much. And there are no other folks here this evening, so we're going to move on to item number four, which is our consent agenda, on which we have the approval of our meeting, our minutes from our meeting on April 15. And if there's no changes, then we can leave it on the consent agenda, and we can move from there. Commissioners? You can still vote. Actually, you can still vote if you weren't here. So we'd need a motion to approve if we agree to what's on the minutes. Otherwise, we can move it from the consent agenda and discuss it, and then proceed.
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, got a motion from Alan.
I'll second that.
Second from Belinda. All in favor? Aye. And opposed? None. Motion for the consent agenda to approve the minutes passes unanimously. Now, we're going to move on to item five, which is the appointment of planning commissioners to the design, objective design standards review. Or a representative. Person. Person. Jeff?
So we just take nominations and vote on a representative to assist on planning staff in reviewing projects that are qualified for staff-level review. As you recall, those would be duplex, side-by-side duplex stack, three, fourplexes, and neighborhood townhomes. And the review body would consist of one of you all and planning staff, and so we need a nomination and a vote.
I would volunteer before a nomination.
Can I also ask, is there a way to have an alternate?
It's all up to you. Sure.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, because it's, you know, we take vacations and do things and don't show up and weird stuff like that. So I would volunteer as either the alternate or the whatever, the main person.
Lovely. Anybody else?
Tucson?
Put me on the spot now.
Or David or Alan?
I also would be happy to un-volunteer if one of the more skilled architectural-type people, landscaper-type people, builder-type people would like to be the number one.
Not jumping to the mics either.
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Oh, then we have a volunteer and a volunteer for primary and an alternate. Does that sound right? Do we have?
Whichever way you'd like to do it. That's fine.
Okay.
Let's have him be the primary because he's got a little more skill, maybe. I don't know.
I don't know if this is going to take much skill. It's an objective design standard.
Well, whatever.
Fair enough.
We can be equals.
Okay, so I guess I need a, so do you, what do you, do you want a motion for all of this, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion.
I move to appoint Jeff, oh, sorry, Tucson Sarion as primary design review and Belinda Higera as backup.
Alternate. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously to have Tucson be the primary representative and Belinda to be our alternate.
I forgot to ask if there was a time limit on this appointment or if it's just like, okay.
Perpetuity.
It's someone else's turn.
That's probably it.
Yeah.
You can back out anytime you want.
Since you volunteered, you could say, I'm unvoluntary.
Who's, sorry, who's the alternate?
Belinda.
And do you want to set an annual on that?
Yeah.
Everybody in agreement? We're kind of a consensus crowd here. Annual opportunity to re-up or decline?
Works for me.
Okay, we have consensus on that. All right, are we good?
Yeah.
Can I move us on to item number six? We're having a public hearing this evening on the parklet ordinance, an amendment to the municipal code regarding parklets.
Excellent. So this is an action item summarized in the staff report under recommendation. It's two parts, and we're being particularly careful moving forward at city attorney's recommendation with respect to pulling out two components to staff recommendations when a SEQA action is involved. And the first and foremost is to, when you do make your approved motion or your recommended motion, please do remember to read it directly from this. Finding is followed, that the action fails to meet the definition of a project under SEQA, et cetera, et cetera, and two, that you are recommending city council amend the Mount Shasta Municipal Code, Section 1903, Parklet Dining. And again, to be very clear, we, you know, we've talked about this on a few occasions, and that the only item that we are amending the existing 1903 with is item X to fall under 1903, and that will be design permanence and character with respect to construction materials and techniques, vicinity design context, and coherent design character. All the other components of that existing parklet ordinance under this action will remain the same. We are only adding item X. So that's all I have to say about that unless you have questions for me.
Okay, team. David, did you have any comments, questions?
Talk about it enough.
Tucson, how about you?
My questions and comments are.
You know what? I guess the mic sharing thing is just maybe not ideal.
My comments are mainly around the design, and what's there now? I assume those wouldn't pass this, these design standards. Is that correct or no?
First of all, you've noticed that the criteria that are offered for your consideration are very subjective. They allow all of the discretion to make that determination to be held by you and you alone. Staff's opinion in the matter is irrelevant, frankly. Having dealt with subjective criteria very much like these in previous positions, I can tell you that the pendulum swing of aesthetic preference swings wide. Under that notion, I would hesitate to say that what's in the street now would fail. I think that what happened at Sparky's, that is, the replacement of bolted-on components to those, that parklet, to be replaced with structural oversized lumber, that is, they're not just braced on or bracketed on or fixed on as additions to, but rather they are part of the structural foundation of the parklet. That does meet this criterion of construction permanence, more so than it did before. So whenever you're dealing with a non-conforming situation, the adage is that you bring it further into compliance, not further out of compliance. So if you were to look to their renewed application under this new ordinance a year from now, because they now have an annual permit issued under the previous ordinance, 1903, I would look at that. What can we do to recommend they or require they improve to better comply with the intent of this ordinance? And that discretion's up to you entirely.
Okay. Now, the goal is here is to make sure these parklets are, you know, improve the downtown aesthetic and not degrade. So that's my main concern, that the design is, you know, of high quality and visually pleasing. So whatever verbiage we can add into this, that will, would further explain what we're looking for, I think, would be helpful.
That was the intent behind construction materials and techniques. Park plans shall specify high-quality construction materials such as masonry, heavy timber, cast iron, or steel frames, and techniques appropriate for commercial application and long-term durability. I think that gives you a lot of licensure to push applicants toward the ultimate extreme of complying with the intent of that criterion.
Yeah.
Same with vicinity design context. There is the reference to desirable vicinity context, not just undesirable vicinity context. So it's up to you all to decide what that is. So you can say, we're using heavy timber, we're using wood. That's comparable to and context of a desirable form and expression. That's all up to you. And then frankly, does it need, is it coherently expressed? Is it a train wreck or is it thoughtful and poetic in nature, shall we say? That is all up to you all to make findings for and direct staff.
Does every parklet come to us?
Indeed.
So we, so we would have a chance to review it?
Absolutely.
And say yes or no?
Yes.
We don't like this.
Through these, yeah, through this filter.
All right, that makes it better then.
If I might add to that, in that process, we're saying, okay, that's, I don't know if two-by-six is heavy timber. Can we go with a four-by-10? And they'll say, no, we don't want to do that. Can we say, well, you're going to make it a four-by-10?
I would make it solid findings. That saying, by that I mean, look to other examples that exist in the public right-of-way or abutting the public right-of-way, either public space or building form, materials, et cetera, that you would hope they aspire to referencing directly. And if you can find it, reference it specifically, and then hold them to it. And that's your discretion.
No, I hear you, but this isn't the kind of construction that we find on the street
True. So maybe the version that gets approved in the future is far more permanent in terms of construction materials and technique.
I like the idea of some relatively heavy timber portions of the, and I'd like them to be overhanging a bit and have some poetic quality to it. Character.
Yeah.
Character. And what I'm asking sort of is, can we push that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great.
And then also make questions around maintenance. You know, if it's wood, it's going to take a beating, especially the western-facing surfaces. So there is some verbiage in here about must be maintained to, you know, keep a fairly new look.
That's in the existing ordinance.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Yep. It wasn't, well, when the parklet renewal application from Sparky's came before me, I failed it on that grounds, that the maintenance was deferred to the degree that those bolt-on stanchions that supported the twinkly lights, you know, were coming unattached and were crooked and looked horrible, and that they ought to replace those with something that's more structural, which they did. They tore them all the way down to the foundation or the footing, if you will, and put four-by-fours, you know, vertically, much like Pipeline did. So that, I mean, you know, by my estimation, it's further into compliance. Does it meet the full intent of this? No, it doesn't, in my opinion. Would it? Could it? Under a new application next year? It's all up to you. But I think this gives you, to your point, I think this gives you the teeth you need to take that bite.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then, I don't remember in here exactly if there's verbiage around what happens with like the, these big concrete blocks that are out there right now. Does it need to have some sort of barrier like that in front of it?
That's Public Works, say, a compounding standard that, and then it's also in 1903, that does require that there be barriers sufficient to withstand, you know, collision at that speed, the speed, posted speed on Mount Shasta Boulevard. Does it need to be a K-rail that's concrete? No. Could it be water-filled? Yes. Less desirable aesthetically, arguably. Could it be concrete planters? Yes. Could it be boulders? Potentially, yes. Could it be something that's more permanent yet? Steel? Iron? Yeah, you could go there.
I think we should specify something like that, you know, something other than, you know, a big concrete block.
What if they did a mural on the concrete blocks?
I don't know.
We did talk, by the way, we, you know, when we were talking about framing this ordinance amendment up, we did talk about coming up with pre-approved plans. We talked about making it completely discretionary and leaving it up to applicants. We chose something, kind of a hybrid between the two. What is it that you're trying to get out of? Something that's permanent and something that looks like it belongs there. Well, that's what these criteria were intended to get from applicants without telling them how to do it.
Are the vehicle barriers that are out there now, did you say they're provided by Public Works? Or, and specified by them or whatever?
No, they need to be provided by the applicant, and as you know, there's only one that's in the direction of travel on the Sparky side. Yeah, there is an, obviously one.
I've done street scape projects with very large concrete planters that I like, you know, that were vehicle-rated and that sort of thing. I'd like to move in that direction if we could. I don't, I don't know. They're much more aesthetically pleasing than.
Landscaping appears elsewhere in the, in that, in the existing ordinance, so you could pull that into this and go there. Yeah.
So, but in this case, because Sparky's is on the south end, you know, closer to, you know, where the traffic is, then it would therefore be their responsibility because Pipeline just happens to have Sparky's to.
Yes.
Save, you know? That's a lot of speed to get through all that to get to Sparky's. So, go ahead before I, anything else, Alan?
No.
Well, so I'm wondering, so next year they'll come, and, you know, we're talking about, you know, adding some design, maybe having them, you know, having those posts instead of it being just this rectangle box, adding some, you know, embellishments to make it more interesting, changing the planter. You know, they might want a little heads up that this is what we're thinking. Like, what's the timeframe? They come in and we say, you know, we don't really like what you have. This is what, we want you to come back with a proposal. Like, what's the timeframe that we have to make this happen? And to, you know, to not spring it on them, per se, but to get where we want to go.
Well, first of all, the existing parklet permits are, were issued under the existing ordinance, and they're good for a year. If you move this forward, it goes to council for two readings. It's effective 30 days after that, so we're still two and a half months away from that effective date, which is still four months prior to their permits needing to be renewed.
If they're paying attention to what we're doing.
Staff will notify them. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's, that's the piece I'm looking for. Go ahead, please. Yeah.
Are leg, shade trellises allowed?
Yes. They're, it's already in the existing ordinance. Yeah.
Okay, so do you, unless, if anybody, we're going to, we're having a public hearing. Let me just ask for now, is everybody sort of satisfied that what we have here meets the concerns of folks? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, and on the slight chance that one person here would like to speak to us, I'll open up the public hearing. And I think that we don't have interest in public participation at this time. We did have a letter from Dale LaForest, and I think that's been addressed by staff with those responses. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, any more comments, questions before we go ahead? Yeah.
When this first came to us, Jeff, there was, I don't know the right words to say, adjusting the monthly fees to more reflect standard rental rates?
We're doing a fee update right now, citywide, and it's folded into that. So we're having a new look at the fee.
Right now, they're basically getting square feet on a penny.
I have one more question, Jim. This was a couple meetings ago that I'm not sure if I got around to asking it, but is there a size limitation to these parklets as far as how many car spaces each restaurant can take? I didn't see one.
It's frontage only, and it's typically.
Frontage?
Yeah, two to three stalls.
Okay.
Right, right. Okay, anything else, commissioners? All right, are we ready to move forward with a motion?
This is the one he wanted us to read.
Oh, you don't need to read the whole thing. Just find, make it that it's fine. Read the first sentence of the first, the first thing under recommendation.
The first recommendation?
No, you read both, both one and two, but you can just read that first sentence of the, of number one.
Now we're going to test my reading. Yeah, okay. So I move that we approve Resolution PC 25-01, recommending the Mount Shasta City Council. Number one, find the action fails to meet the definition of a project and is therefore not subject to review under SEQA. Stop there. Number two, amend Mount Shasta Municipal Code, Chapter 19.03, Parklet Dining.
Maybe as presented. I think maybe we would want to add that.
As presented.
Well, it's in the resolution. It's attached to the resolution as exhibited.
As attached to the, as attached. Okay.
As attached to the resolutions.
Okay, we have a motion from Belinda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Alan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes unanimously to, for the Resolution PC 25-01. Num, item number seven, the public hearing, another public hearing on our tiny house on wheels ordinance. Jeff?
Yeah, a little housekeeping first. So I handed some material out to you. First, I'll refer you to the public comment from Peggy Reisch. This was an ongoing dialogue with her via email to clarify the density bonus as it pertains to tiny homes on wheels, the tiny home villages. And she asked for clarification on a site diagram which depicted a one-acre site with maximum allowed tiny homes under, you know, non-deed restriction density compared with a deed-restricted, 100% low-income, 80% density bonus, which gives you a density bonus of seven units for a total of 16. So that's what this site diagram does. I handed out the same site diagram in a larger form, format there, along with a bunch of other development scenarios to test this notion of nine. And then also to be clear about when density bonuses apply, when they don't, and also when they do apply, what is our, what's our formula? So to be clear, in our, let's take C1, this first, the first one on the first page there, 20 units an acre is allowed, is the. 20 units an acre is allowed is the maximum density, right? But we're not using that as a calculation for tiny homes on wheels. We're using the max density of nine units for any tiny home development, okay? The reason that it's important that we remember what that base density is, is when it's less than the number nine by site area or density. So if the effective site density is less than nine, it caps tiny homes on wheels to the lower number. Okay? And that's what I've explained in the successive pages here. So if you go to page two, you'll see a quick site diagram that shows how 16 units would fit on an acre and still meet all of the applicable provisions of the existing municipal code. So all of the base zoning density standards, the objective design standards, and building code, by the way. All right? So you get up to 16 units, you get some open space, you get some circulation. In this diagram, it's off of an alley, so I lost the label on the, on the top edge of the sheet. That should be an alley up there, so you can do single loaded corridors straight through, or single, one-way corridors through the site to get the clustered parking pursuant to our objective design standards. You get the spacing pursuant to building code, and you get all the setbacks met. So you can get a bonus on a one acre site in C1 at those densities pretty easily if it fits. On the third sheet, I took a half acre site, and the first sheet shows under current density without deed restriction, same thing. It checks all the boxes. It meets all the setbacks, it meets the clustered parking requirements, it meets the common open space requirements, it provides access to all of the tiny homes on wheels to move them in and out of the site. And then if you, if you switch the page, you, you find the deed restriction added, which bumps it up to 10 units, because 80% of nine is an additional seven units, adding seven to, sorry. Spider. Gets you 16, but it's limited to 10. And the reason it's limited to 10 is that if you fit more tiny homes than this current diagram, you would begin to locate the tiny homes too close to each other. One, spacing separations would, for these units, would frame construction. Lower price point means no firewalls, means glazing is essential for livability of these units. So the moment you start throwing lots of fire hardening at them to get them closer than 10 feet, you blow the building code, and we would, we would not approve it. So you're capped at 10. So the density bonus doesn't get you that additional six units or total of seven units. It only gets you one, because you blew the building code. Same with the final example, which is a quarter acre site. You can see that you can get five units, which, because your base density is 20 units an acre, it's a quarter acre site, a quarter of 20 is five, so you get a five, the site diagram shows five fits pretty comfortably. But you turn the page, and the max that we can get up to with affordable is six units, because anymore, if you shoehorn anymore onto that site, same thing, you're violating building code due to unit separation.
Can I ask questions now?
Sure, clarify.
Because of the distance between the individual units?
Yes. And potentially others. So we also have WUI standards, which would apply in, between the wildland and urban interface, which, and frankly, now that we're all of high fire severity zone, there'd be fire hardening standards which, which lay on top of this. So, I'll pause right there and ask, and you can answer the question.
My question is, the configuration of the six units, if that were slightly deeper and narrower.
Yeah.
You could.
Sure.
And parallel them out, you could get another unit.
Yeah, you probably could.
Would, and that could be allowed.
Right.
If they still met.
Right.
Because it'd still meet density requirements and distance.
If they can prove, if they can prove that it's a code compliant project, and that's defined as meeting everything on the books. General plan, municipal code, objective design standards, and building code that we adopt in addition to this, which we will need to do to get there. And, and that's a segue to what I handed out. Lastly, which is a new Exhibit A to your resolution. And I added, on page one only of the ordinance, I added the underlined text and eliminated the strike through text. What I'm trying to do with that is two things. In the purpose and intent statement, I added, for clarity's sake, and all applicable provisions of the Mount Shasta Municipal Code to protect public health, safety, and welfare. That staff gets to point applicants to reinforce the argument I just made, that if you violate spacing separations, you're violating the building code. We can reject that, even if it is a density bonus project, because it's not conforming with the purpose and intent statement of this ordinance. Bulletproof. Second thing that I did was, and again, this next item is particularly nuanced, because the definition of tiny homes on wheels is fluid. It changed most recently in 2022, it changed previously in 2020. HCD is stuck on a 2016 definition. The International Code, residential, California Residential Code, Oregon Residential Code, all define tiny homes on wheels slightly differently. Because this is trend setting, new legislation, we will be paying very close attention to this. It's already in our municipal code that if this doesn't comply with state law, state law prevails. So what I did was sharpen the spear, if you will, a little bit on what is defined as a, you know, as a tiny home, how it meets that definition. What I got from you all, as in the previous five meetings we discussed this, was that you wanted to push this. You wanted to provide opportunities for this building typology to be treated as one of an affordable, a more affordable by design residential prototype. And secondly, to do so for permanent occupancy citywide, under a set of rigorous design standards, to make sure we don't have trailer parks everywhere, but we have tiny home villages that not only meet safety standards for American National Standards Institute because they're on the road, and little doilies and chimneys are flying off as you drive down the road, it's gotta be, it's gotta be sufficient to meet those highway standards. That's why I added B. But we're going above and beyond, and we're saying that not only does it need to be roadworthy, but it needs to meet local aesthetic and character standards, which are the rest of this document. And we've, we've pushed pretty far with this, with roof pitch and materiality, cladding, and porches, and, you know, so on. So this, by staff's due diligence, goes way above and beyond what the minimum park model RVs look and feel like. And frankly, also far above and beyond what other jurisdictions are doing. Most jurisdictions that are progressively treating this issue, Los Angeles, San Diego, Santa Cruz, Humboldt County, and elsewhere, frankly, because Housing, Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, required universally that for housing elements to be certified, that they need to explore this initiative, and a lot of jurisdictions have done that, we included. But no one goes quite this far. And so I want to explain that most of them use ADUs as synonymous with tiny homes on wheels, and they're limited to that. The tiny home, there are a handful that are doing this. Tiny homes on wheels, not tiny homes on foundations, but tiny homes on wheels has synonymous with single-family residential and multifamily dwellings, which is essentially what we're saying. We're saying we're giving them a density of nine units per site in a C1 zone, unless and until it violates the maximum zoning for small sites, and then it's capped at that zoning, per my examples. That's all I want to say about what I've added since the packet. The rest of this material is, as you've seen it, it's got your fingerprints on it. You helped create this, directed me to prepare this over a number of meetings. No changes elsewhere. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions and entertain the deliberation.
Okay, let's start on this end. Alan, do you have comments, questions?
I like what you've done. I like where we're at with this. It really reads, reads good. I don't have any comments right now.
Okay. Belinda?
In the one diagram that you gave us, the one with the, all this extra.
Page two.
Sides, is, I was looking at that, and I was going, is it, can there be a permanent housing, like, a few condos or something, or apartments and tiny homes on the same property?
If it meets or doesn't violate underlying zoning standards and density and general plan provisions, sure.
So you could do a kind of mixed deal?
Yeah. I would, I think this public comment you heard at the outset of this meeting might contemplate something like that, whether it's a primary structure of maybe multiple use, you know, surrounded by smaller tiny homes, if you will, on foundations. I think we're going to find, as this issue matures and settles into the context of Mount Shasta, that you're, you're, you're going to find tiny homes more likely on foundations than wheels. To really meet the rigorous standard as a definitional standard that's set here, there are certain components of this, of the construction of these units that needs to be approved by HCD, because it's on a chassis, it's on wheels. So, and, so a developer would say, yeah, I'm going to build 10 of these things, and I'm going to plop them down into C1 site of acre, we'll see how it goes. Well, they have to be a certified builder for HCD if they're all tiny homes on wheels. They have to meet these definite, this definitional standard, and HCD assigns inspectors to ensure that that's, that's the case. In addition to that, local inspection would take place for the non-structural thing. So the, so the circulation, the landscaping, probably two-thirds of this ordinance would be reviewed by you and, and staff and our, and our building officials to ensure that the totality of this, the intents met.
Thank you. A lot of work, thank you.
Do you some?
Yeah, I think this is, this is a nice, nicely put together ordinance. I had to do a few questions here, and thank you for putting that ANCI line in there, because that was a big question I had, you know, what building code are, are these going to be falling under? And I assume this is in lieu of, like, a building permit, so to speak, and having to submit plans and all that. As long as they are certified under the standard, then it's good to go.
Yeah, and the reason that I struck out Title 24 of the California Building Code or California Code of Regulations and replaced it with 2022 California Residential Code and Appendix AQ is because Appendix Q under the 19 code was replaced in the 22 code. So there's a triennium, every three years, the building codes are updated, and local jurisdictions adopt. So in 2022, from 19 to 22, and from A to AQ, or to a Q to AQ, and with that, there were more tiny homes on wheels provisions. That said, there's, by reference, a requirement for B to be complied with as well. So, because we're locally, we lose control. Once it gets on wheels, we lose control. It's, it's, there's state highways provisions, there's certifications at the state level that provide inspectors the, the training to inspect for mobility purposes as well. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a team effort when it comes to this toward the end.
However, if they are, as you mentioned, put on permanent foundations, does that bring them into a different category of building code as far as sprinkler systems, solar systems?
Yes.
Energy reports?
Yeah, and if you recall, we did have this discussion a while back. Our code is, our existing zoning code is, and, and Title 15, building code by reference is very permissive on minimum unit size. We have no minimum. So we can already build tiny homes on foundations under our current code. We're acting the provision to say that if you, if you keep them on wheels, then there's an extra bar to cover, to clear. And if you don't, then you've got that option to go on a foundation for a nominal fee, because it's still affordable by design. It's still a small foundation, and there are creative ways to do that with small, with small structures, yeah.
And if it's brought in on wheels?
And dropped.
And then dropped.
Yeah, yeah. Very common with manufactured homes, you know, totally off-site certified, modular, factory-built, shipped in parts, assembled on site sometimes or not, dropped off the chassis, or, you know, or off, off the, off the wheels, and, and put on a foundation, which we inspect. So we get to control that.
The parking surface, I see that we're calling out for two inches of asphalt. I'm wondering if, if that's just under the, the unit itself, and doesn't have to extend in front to a driveway to be able to, to move the unit in?
Yeah, that's where we would fold in the rest, that's why I added, as, as applies to other, all applicable provisions of the municipal code. So that's where Title 15 would come in, where we get to control aisle widths and surface compact materiality, et cetera. So we're, we're making sure that the drive aisle can handle large, you know, heavy units being drug in on and off-site.
I guess my question is, does that parking pad need to extend to a driveway?
Yes.
It does need to?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the path of travel to go on and off-site would need to meet those standards.
Could the surface under the unit itself be like more of a decorative crushed rock with a weed fabric under it?
Yeah.
Instead of asphalt?
It can, and I think we've provided for that as well. Class two base rocker equivalent, yeah. I mean, it does say two inches of asphalt over or equivalent permeable or non-permeable surface.
Okay.
So we're, I think we're good. We did discuss that previously, and we didn't want to pave everything and stick homes, tiny homes on wheels on it. We wanted to provide opportunity for percolation and.
Yes.
Site, site storm, you know, retention, detention. So post-development peak flows are no greater than pre-development.
Mm-hmm.
And that's standard that we apply. Public Works is pretty rigorous about that, so.
Yeah, good. For the decking, parking pad shall feature a entry porch or decking with steps. Is there any size limitation to that deck? I mean, could it be?
You know, we.
Usable?
I guess we pondered that, and we could certainly add it. My reticence would be that, you know, it's kind of a somewhat arbitrary one-size-fits-all attempt, and I think in a single unit context, most of the prototype, you know, villages that, that I toured, they were, they were amenitized pretty well with exterior features such as decks and common space. It, it, what's, it's what gives them the market advantage over a comparable price point. So I think that when we get to that point in the discussion, reviewing of application, and it's barely large enough for a door swing and set of steps to a parking pad, you know, this planner would push back and go, give me a table and two chairs and a place to chill out. You got the room, you know, do it. And particularly in village. And particularly in village context where you all see it, per the regulatory authority provisions, you've got all the discretion in the world to make sure that liberal provisions are made on-site for these amenities and not to skip. And we, I think everybody knows it when they see it. It would help to see a few of these where even the RV parks that are, you know, branded and stylized for Airstreams or vintage trailers, they get that they're marketed in large part by their arrival sequence and their public space components because their interior space is so compromised. They really have to make up for it in exterior amenities.
Yeah, I just think, you know, it's, number one, it expands their living area if they have an outdoor deck. And they're just nice in general. What about like storage units? Or not, not storage units, but little storage buildings, you know, that's, that are separate? Is there any provision for that?
Not in this code, but elsewhere in the municipal code. I think we also discussed, you know, being sensitive to holding tiny homes on wheels and villages to a higher standard than we would multifamily projects of a similar market rate, you know, cost level or expense level for housing generally. But again, there is discretion. We do have garbage recycling provisions, so centralized. I do think that you could apply a standard, public health, safety, general welfare is a pretty broad provision. We have lots of nuisance components in our code that would allow us to enforce exterior storage of, you know, junk and whatnot. And certainly refuse, but, you know, this, this community draws a lot of active young people with toys. So the question becomes, where does the mountain bike go? The gravel bike go? You know, your AT gear, your Alpine gear, your paddleboard, you know, your three fly rods and so on. So if they aren't, you know, putting those things inside somewhere or on a structural, or inside some structure that, again, we're silent on, then we would, we would encourage them to do so at the outset, for one. You know, a gear room or a gear shed. And if they fail to do so and stuff accumulates over time, then we enforce the nuisance provisions in the code. But again, I think the self-selects itself, you know? People that are, people who have stuff like to protect it. And the question then becomes, can I put a tough shed up as opposed to a cedar-clad, you know, stick-built thing that I, that I made proudly? Why, what's the difference? Well, the code doesn't go there yet, you know, elsewhere in the code. And do we really want to hold these guys to a higher standard? I think that's risky.
I would think that the last couple multifamily housing, small unit things we did, there was a, there was a, one of the, one of the benefits that the developer wanted to do was some shared storage, you know, like a bunch of little storage things on-site so that, and that's a, they rent those separately and
Yeah, and they could, we could do that. I mean, there's nothing here that says, you know, you know, site coverage provisions, you know, you're, these small footprint, you can tell that site coverage on these things is, you know, probably somewhere in the 25% range. So you're, you've got room, I think, on-site to, you know? Certainly, if it's under 200 square feet, exempt from site coverage anyway. So, yeah, I think there's provisions for it.
Okay. And what is the minimum spacing between these that they need to be?
Say, without fire provisions, it's 10 feet. So it's usually five feet to a center line and then five feet from that. So each unit's got five feet of, from their site and then five feet beyond, so. So that's why I said the, once you get up, once you start to shoehorn these in with density provisions that exceed the base zones per, you know, per density bonus, you can scale these off pretty quick. These are 14-foot wide units, so if they're slightly less in the width of the unit in these site diagrams, they've blown it. So that, it's easy to get there pretty quick.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Tucson. David?
So did we, I guess there's no definition of tiny home villages? I know I missed the last meeting, but I think in that provision or code, there's this separation between the zones and if they're going to be owned or rented spaces?
No, we didn't go there. I don't know if you missed that meeting or not. The definition for tiny, tiny home villages is two parts. It's one, it's got to meet the definition of a tiny home on wheels. And two, it's got to be nine or less. And then also, you know, comply with all the provisions and the site standards.
So are we, so this is allowing this argument again of basically a mobile home park for tiny homes?
I won't, I won't dignify that with a response. I'll say that
A developer can develop the pads and then rent them out to people with tiny homes?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry to be, to be blunt, but, but I, this is particularly sensitive because as we move forward to this and we go to council with this, we really want to make sure that we're not talking about mobile home parks all over town. We're talking about
You are.
Well, hopefully we're not, right? Because
It is.
So how do we differentiate? It is harder and I was, that's why, one of the reasons I was sad. I mean, obviously you had things to do, but having you part of that conversation, since that was an important concern, right? That we want something aesthetically nice that you wouldn't mind having next door or, you know, wherever. And how do we, how did we, how do we get there? Because I think we did listen when you said that early on. How can we make this something that isn't that? That isn't a mobile home park, but does have, it can't, they, they have design standards that mobile home parks don't.
Yeah, they do.
And I don't know a whole lot about mobile home parks. I have this certain image and we have, you know, examples of them around town.
I mean, it's nothing against a mobile home park, but we have an ordinance for a site that wants to be operated like a mobile home park. And all we're doing is making, which are heavily regulated by the state and completely different than, you know,
Subdivision.
Like basically we're just calling it a different thing to skirt the regulations of the state, but it's basically the same thing, operating the same way as a mobile home park. The only difference is, is the piece being put on it.
How is it different?
Huh?
So I'm very familiar with HCD's regulatory authority over mobile home parks, having been the regulatory authority for a number of them. And then also having deferred to ACD for regulatory authority over mobile home parks. And having had a hand in the creation of this ordinance, I can tell you they're vastly different. So the rules
I mean, you're, you're developing a site with pads on it for individual owners to park their structure on and rent it?
I'll agree with that.
But we also allow
If that's your definition, yeah, if that's your common definition of the two, then I would agree.
Which seems like it's exactly the same as
No, and where it differs is the set of standards in here are far more rigorous with respect to materiality, design character, and public amenity on-site. So landscaping standards, remember, we've got objective design standards we're laying on top of this. And we've got Title 22, or excuse me, 2022 CBC Appendix AQ, which mobile homes do not.
Mobile homes probably have their own 2002 appendix.
They, they don't. The standards are far less rigorous. Materiality, they're not designed for permanent occupancy. Regulations with respect to insulation are far less. Volumetrically, the room size is compromised. So all those interior standards create an exterior expression of a thing that is an RV. What we're trying to do is create regulations which create an exterior thing that is a tiny home that looks like a tiny house, not an RV. So when one says, we're just creating RV parks, no, we're not creating RV parks. We're creating tiny house parks.
I'm not saying an RV park. I'm saying a mobile home park.
Okay, a mobile home park. So I guess the expression of a mobile home, from a design standpoint, in your mind, is that synonymous with what we're creating here?
No, I think it's the, I guess, my argument is the operation of the site is the same. And if we already have an ordinance for an operation of one, that same type of site, why are we making a new ordinance to operate another site in the same way?
Define operation of the site.
Where a developer develops the site and then rents the land to somebody who has their structure that houses on it.
Well, that's a very small part of the operation of a site, in my estimation. I think the operation of the site is landscaping, setbacks, common area, et cetera. Mobile home parks have no standards with respect to that. All they're doing is, they have a standard with respect to site area and that's it. So these standards get you a whole different look and feel. They don't look like mobile home parks, they look like tiny home parks.
And don't we have another model, an owner, there's, we're open to a couple of several choices in terms of ownership models? One is that the developer could own the house, the tiny house on wheels, and rent it as opposed to you owning your own and pulling it into a space? So I think that's, so there's at least two models out there. Or don't we have also that somebody could put their tiny house on wheels and own the space? I don't know if they can own the space they're in or collectively own it.
Yeah, this ordinance is silent on, so the market will deliver what the market will deliver. Someone could come in and buy a 10,000-square-foot site and put as many tiny homes on it as possible, one owner. Rent out spaces, deed restrict or not, that land area. So they're essentially renting space.
I guess, how is it, what's the oversight if somebody develops a site and just puts pads on it? Who, what's the process for me to move my tiny home to that site and make sure that it meets these standards?
Homeowner Association and CCNRs are required prior to site approval. So if you move in, you need to comply with those CCNRs and, as regulated by the HOA?
Okay, well, I, everybody knows HOAs, some of them are enforced, some of them aren't enforced. That's not a
Do you have a suggestion to change the ordinance or are you just?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out.
It's like the construction of a tiny home. Do we need to have a mobile home?
I mean, well, I know, but we're having, I think you could probably find tiny homes that are constructed that meet Section AQ, but don't meet our objective design standards. So what's the, how does that get regulated if?
Just like any other development that is non-compliant, we, it's part of a code enforcement process and we're
But there's no application process for, if I'm going to rent this space and move my tiny home to it, my tiny home doesn't get reviewed by the city to make sure it meets the design standards?
Yes, it would. I, if, if
So if I was the developer and I wanted to rent a space, I would have to say, okay, you need to get your structure approved by the city before I can rent to you?
Yeah, every tiny home is subject to these standards. So if someone said, I want to roll in my, my aluminum-clad, you know, corrugated plastic beauty that I made in my backyard last week onto this site, we would say, no, it's in violation of this, so.
But how?
CCNRs, I would say, yeah, the permit, the permit is issued with CCNRs and HOA. Same exact thing for condos and same exact thing for multifamily projects.
But those are, you know, the structure that's being built.
And if that structure over time is either deferred with respect to maintenance, we enforce. If it's in noncompliance with the conditions of approval, we enforce. Same applies here. We would say that you're essentially creating an opportunity for a condo project that has, it's time of application, you know, a partially filled list of occupants. And you've created a site that contains opportunity for more occupants. Then, under these provisions, we would say, okay, show us the CCNRs, which ensure that your site meets these standards for new occupants. And then we would condition the approval pursuant to this issued by permit. So each one, each, every ordinance to approve this, any type of development, comes with a permit process that goes before staff for some of it and you all for others. And it comes with a resolution and it comes with conditions of approval and it comes with homeowners association and CCNRs, all of which conspire to give staff plenty of authority, in my estimation, to hold developers over site control. And if they don't, we fine them $100 a day and for first day and then $500 and so on. So, yeah, it gets, it's all there.
Is there, is there a permit process to set a tiny home on its pad?
Yes, that's what this would provide for.
So 10 years down the road, you know, one tiny home moves to Santa Cruz and a new tiny home comes down from Bend. And it, the procedure for this new tiny home 10 years down the road, in order for them to pull in, onto their pad, are we depending upon whoever, if it's this model where somebody owns it and is renting that space, they're the ones who, like, how does some, I think to his point, how does somebody, how do, how are we, how do we know that those are being enforced? So somebody pulls up, you know, he sends a picture, yeah, it looks great, come on down. Or
I guess, short of, you know, I'm certainly willing to and happy to entertain suggestions. I think there's, there's a robust set of standards that we through permitting process have control over.
Yeah, in the beginning, that totally makes sense.
And so, so, for example, if someone came in tomorrow and said, hey, all right, well, next year, and said, okay, we've got, we've got 10 of these things and, you know, I want to create a site with 10 pads. And eight of them are immediately ready for occupancy. Here, here's photographs of them. Just like anything else, you know, you don't know what you're looking, you're going to get until it's built. You rely on lustered material, land sets and so on. We would ask for the same thing here. And then we have substantial conformance provisions that say, well, hold on. You know, you've got to be, you've got to go through an inspection process when a new unit arrives to ensure that it substantially complies with what you submitted initially and substantially complies with these. And we have a site inspection process for hooking up to city services. And we have a site inspection process to ensure that the deck is in place, the landscape's in place and so on. So I would say there's plenty of teeth in this thing for us to ensure that through the permitting process for successive units, that we require they be reviewed.
I think maybe you're, that piece, the successive units piece requiring inspection might be the piece that wasn't clear.
So where would you put that?
I don't know. We just, we're talking about it. Is, does that, David, am I getting, am I getting close to what you're thinking?
Well, I, I don't Well, I, I don't like the model of a developer developing them and renting them out to people. So, I, I mean, especially R2, R3, I just don't like that model of a tiny home village.
You would prefer what model? Ownership?
Yeah, I would prefer a developer develops a site and owns the tiny houses and then rents them out to tenants.
Or sells them.
No, rents them out.
Can't they sell them?
Oh yeah, what if they're like condos, where you own it?
But I just don't like the idea of them being able to be easily moved, and this space that once had 10, and it looked good, in 10 years, when tiny homes aren't a fad anymore, now it has one.
Well, we have properties around the city that look crappy. I mean, we, we, we have, we deal with that all over housing.
I, I understand that, but I just, you know, or if it doesn't take off, you just get stuck with one, and...
I've got a bare lot next to me now. I mean, it's, I don't hate that, the fact that it's empty.
But it's not empty with a bunch of concrete parking pads.
And mo, and mode, or whatever.
Does it, we require maintenance, landscape maintenance, though, maintenance on the sites, though, as I understand. The other, the other thing I want to say, I understand, in my, I grew up in Ashland, I know in the area through there and down here, too, I've seen old mobile home parks, and that same, like, aluminum, and now they're all dusty old aluminum, crappy looking things. I, the architectural detailing and roof lines and stuff like this, I think set it, set them apart substantially from what I see in mobile home parks, as far as visually.
I'm not arguing that they're aesthetically different.
Okay.
I'm...
It's the ownership model, it's the, or the lack thereof, or?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't, just, it seems like, it, it just doesn't sit well with me.
So would, would part of your concern about it turning into something that's a blight in our community, in some period of time, other than, well, emptiness isn't going to solve it, but if, if we required an inspection of all new tenants, would that help mitigate some of your concern?
I just don't, I'm against the, the operating principle of them being operated as a site developer and renting out spaces. I just, it doesn't...
Well, we were given the task by council to come up with an ordinance, so we have this job in front of us, that we're, that we need to hash out in some fashion. So, so we can't, I think, other than we could say, I mean, I guess we could say, we could opt out, but I, I love consensus. So I'm, I'm gonna see if we can get there.
Yeah, I, I'm, I don't support the, a developer develops it and then rents out, slips to other people, and especially in R2 and R3.
So I had a question about R2 and R3, because the examples you gave were just in C1. So the only, are, are diff, are differences then, because I can never remember this, sorry, in the different zones, if we did have these, in R2, any, we have density, the basic differences are gonna be density between the different zones?
For small sites, yeah, I mean, nine is citywide, density, or zoning district wide, for all zoning districts. But, you know, smaller, more dense, the more, the more density, the higher the density provisions in zoning, typically the smaller lot size. So you'll see zero lot line, you know, zero setbacks in our, in C1 for a mixed use project. You know, oddly, our code does have, in R3 and C1 even, C2, if it's a pure residential project, you gotta have a 20-foot front yard setback. So you can't build a non-mixed use, a standalone apartment building in, in, in our downtown, unless you put a 20-foot setback. That's, that's a, it's an odd standard. So, I think to answer your question, you know, yeah, I mean, there's more wiggle room for these things at the perimeter of our core, in lower density residential zones, we, we opted out of R1, we're protecting R1. What I tried to do in a previous meeting was give you a map and a, there's an, and location for 19 sites that are currently vacant, that qualify. That's not to say that, you know, a developed site could, could be merged with an abutting vacant site, demoed and create a village. I doubt that's gonna happen, because highest and best use is, what's the, is the existing use typically. I don't think the market pressure is here to start demoing and assembling sites and building tiny home villages. I think we're probably gonna see one of these things citywide. I think that, in my experience and research and familiarity anecdotally with tiny homes, that 99% of tiny homes are owned. They, they're owned. The individual home is owned, and it's pulled around.
And they rent the pad.
They, they're pull around, they, they rent land, essentially, yes. And what we're saying is that that's okay here. We recognize that the industry is set up that way, as a, as a affordable housing option, that part of mobile living is, is the attraction. And you want to go live in Mount Chasta for a while, and you want to go live in Palm Springs for a while. So yeah, you find out where these, these villages are allowed, you, you set up the potential for occupancy ahead of time, and yeah, there are people that do that. It's becoming quite popular, particularly as the housing crisis becomes more acute, and will, will get more acute. And I think what we're saying is that under the HOA and CCR provisions, that all occupants of a tiny home village shall be members of a, of an HOA, which is responsible for administering the CCNRs, regulating use, appearance, maintenance of villages. The CCR shall be established prior to permit approval by the planning commission. Noncompliance with CCNR shall be enforceable pursuant to the provisions of Title I or Title VI. So...
So the noncompliance piece that you're talking about is what's going to preserve the appearance down the pike?
Yeah. So we would make sure that the CCNRs address new occupants, because it's gonna happen. You're gonna have, you're gonna have cycles of people moving, coming and going, and that's, that's the, that's the purpose.
I want to ask a question here. Where I live, we, I moved not very long ago, and I walked by several properties that are falling into significant disrepair. It's really awful. And I don't know how we can stop that potential, and even, this, these are single family homes. So I, is, is that your concern, just that, that it starts to look bad, because people aren't taking advantage?
No, no.
It's...
I think it's the, it's that you'll just have the potential for empty space, I guess.
Yeah. And don't we have that now, in other housing?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I just don't...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to better understand your concern. And I'd rather not have it too. I don't necessarily know how to affect it.
Oh, you know what? Can we get the door open for, it looks like Johanna's here? And we are safe from the knife wielding, long, well, no, this person we, I recognize. So...
She's only 5'5" with gray hair.
She's, yeah, she's not a tall, long, gray haired person. Okay, so, right, so how, so the, we're concerned about, that the ownership model could lend itself to decay?
I just don't like the ownership model. I'm against that model. I don't, I think it makes the site look less appealing. I don't like the...
You're making a conjecture that the owner is no good.
I, I don't like the way that the site looks. I think in the first time this was brought up, the pictures were far more aesthetically pleasing on the sites that you could clearly see were developed for them to be there long-term versus the sites that were developed for them to be frequently moved.
Both, both of those models need to meet all the standards in here. So back when you brought that up, my point was, if you don't like the rigorous, the, the, the extent of the standards to ensure that under both models, site standards are, are complied with, are mandatory, then suggest some. But under a rental model or an ownership model, it's still the same site area, it's still the same landscaping standards, there's still the common area, CCNRs and HOA, so what's the difference?
Aren't I allowed to not like the approach?
No, I, I'm just, you, you're allowed for your opinion, of course, we're just trying to, we're seeking substance. How, why? What is the manifestation here, or the lack thereof, that gives you that concern? That's, I mean, we're trying to figure that out.
It seems like a way to make a new ordinance for rebranding what is a mobile home park to be allowed citywide, when we've had restrictions on where mobile home parks can be.
And so that, that relates to ownership and how, in the...
Because it's being operated the same way a mobile home park is being operated. Somebody develops a site, builds pads, and then rents those pads to people with their own structure they own.
And, and your proposal would be what, to fix that?
Well, my proposal was, in the beginning, to allow that model in C1 and C2, but not in R2 and R3.
And, and in its place, allow what?
For what, R2 and R3?
Yeah.
To where the developer develops it and owns the tiny homes, and then change the site development to allow for them to be more like permanent structures, and not have these path-throughs and big driveways and...
Right, so then what you're doing is, you're restricting the market to a pure, to a non-mobile market, essentially, because they don't, by, by their nature, tiny homes come and go, that, that's...
Well, yeah, in R2 and R3, it would be, yes, it would allow for a, a lower investment development for single occupancy homes, and then, in C1 and C2, for more of the mobile.
Yes, C1, C2 mobile, R2, R3, single ownership, and they, they stay put.
But that sounds so, I think that a tiny home on wheels, which is our job around this ordinance, that would preclude allowing them. I guess you could move it in, you could move something in, but then it would need to become permanent, on a permanent foundation.
It could still be the tiny home on wheel.
It would have to stay in R2. Is that right? Did I understand that right? It would have to stay in R2 and R3. If they, if they moved a tiny home in, it's gonna stay, that?
Yes, but it's a lower investment cost to the developer.
Yeah, I hear you. I'm just making sure I understand. That's, I heard you saying, yeah.
I mean, technically, it doesn't have to stay, but they would be, the likelihood that they would stay if they're owned by the person who put them there, is the developer is probably greater.
Okay.
More invested in what they...
Yeah.
How, what is the, in the examples that we have so far, the, how, frequency of movement? Do they move often?
Again, I, I did, I did a little bit of research, and I, I've looked at maybe a dozen different examples of these ordinances, and have familiarity with handful of owners of tiny homes, and through the folks that were here prior, prior testifying. Typically, what happens is that they are custom-built for individuals, and those individuals find a site, and typically these sites are rural, unpermitted sites, they live kind of in the margins, if you will, of legality. And the cost per square foot to, to build them and to operate them is a fraction of stick build on site, you know, foundation homes, and that's what's attractive. And the intent initially was by HCD, it's trickled down through council, and to us here tonight, was to provide a, a welcome home for, for that model, you know, that is, individuals who like the idea, like the mobile lifestyle, want to live in a tiny home, good friend of mine happens to live in one, et cetera.
Yeah, you didn't answer the question.
They're mobile. I mean, they, they move, I don't know, as often as they want to. I know in one case, you know, they were in one place for a year and moved on, you know, sees, some move on seasonally, I think. The one up in Sandy, Oregon, that I looked at, or Mount Hood, Oregon, has a seasonal, as you can imagine, people probably avoid the snow. But again, you know, we're, we're, we would still review these things to ensure that permanent occupancy under current building code here, so snow load, and the standards that are, are here, would, would, would apply. So it's what happens with mobile living. Lots of RV parks will allow only, you know, Airstreams, or only, you know, $4 million coaches, or only vintage trailers. You, you don't, you, you gotta pass a set of standards before you arrive on site. It's no different than these. We're saying that the HOA controls this, you have one, if you have one site owner, a president of the COA who owns this site, makes provisions for people to come and go, they need to comply, they need to be on board with the HOA. In my experience, HOAs are held very, very tightly with control at the city, there are annual reviews. And I, I mean, we, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm just trying to think of ways to make that more robust. You know, it says pretty clear that all occupants shall be members of, of an HOA. So if you have a new occupant coming in, they need to be a member of the HOA. We look at their unit to comply with these standards.
So we do inspect all new occupants? That implies that we inspect, instead of the HOA being responsible?
Yeah, HOAs, in my experience, again, that's, I don't think we have an HOA in town that the city inspects. I don't know that we have that kind of development here. I know there's a couple up in, just out, you know, up on Everett, right?
Yeah, at McLeod.
I don't think we have viable HOA, frankly, in town. The KOA site, we do annual inspections there. I know that in previous cities where we, we are the regulatory authority for mobile home parks and RV parks, we, we do annual reviews. I think the HOA and the CCNRs would mandate annual reviews. We could make a provision for that in here, that, that, you know, adding... HOA, CCNR shall be established prior to permit approval and reviewed annually?
I like that.
By the planning commission?
Yeah.
So maybe that, would that mitigate some of your concern?
I don't like the operational, I don't like the, I...
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know there's a lot of people in town that don't like it. They don't like that model, so...
I'm not familiar with it enough to kind of go, don't like it. I, I'm not, I, I'm not, you might be able to visualize it better than I do, but I'm, I'm not a, at, at this point, I'm okay with it in, as, as written, minor tweaks, and allowing them to, R2 and R3 also, to be the way we've written. But I understand your concerns.
Well, it still has to go to council, beyond us. And I think we were, we've been tasked with, generally, how do we help create more housing? And under that general request, specifically, we were given the job of coming up with a tiny homes on wheels ordinance. So that's our job, so...
And the, and the housing element has a program that says, speaks to villages?
Right, so that we have a job to do that. Is it possible to do that in a way that works for you, David?
Well, I don't, I mean...
It basically says, I must be, everybody owns.
In R2 and R3.
In R2 and R3, if everybody owns.
Yeah, I mean, you're, yeah, I mean, you're basically, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, you might as well just say, everybody can develop an RV park everywhere. And, I mean, that's basically what you're doing is making a RV park that just says this, like, you know, instead of an Airstream, it's only a tiny home that can be parked there.
But I think from an aesthetic perspective and what we see in our minds...
Well, I think, I think Airstreams look better than tiny homes.
I don't. I like the look of it.
It's, it's all...
Subjective, first.
Yes.
I, I think that these tiny homes and a lot of the tiny homes that I've seen are significantly more aesthetically pleasing than a, although an Airstream's a nice-looking thing, I tell you.
Right. In certain contexts, an Airstream is cool. I agree.
Can we make some kind of arrangement in that? Jeff, I'm trying to talk to you just, I'm just, because I know that... Is there a way to change it in the R2 and R3 so that it must be owner...
Well, that's how it was when it was written in April, and somehow it got, I know, and somehow it got pulled out. Yes.
We never, there was, yeah, you all took it out.
Okay. From R2 and R3, is ownership...
Yeah, we discussed it, but it never made it into the ordinance. It was, it was an option in the staff report.
To get to consensus? To get to consensus? I'd go with the R2, R3, ownership...
Well, I mean, and I don't, I don't think you don't have a point, certainly. I mean, aesthetically, there is something we, we do want to preserve in our residential zones. To your point.
And in an R2 and R3, let's say I own a lot, and I wanted to put three tiny homes on it, but I wasn't going to, I was going to own the tiny homes. I'm owning the tiny homes and I'm renting them. Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
No, I have no, I don't have an objection to tiny homes. I don't like the model of base, yes, I don't...
Okay. So if they were, if we could count on in our residential zones, tiny homes on wheels that are going to stay there, they're going to have the CCNRs that we know from the get-go...
You wouldn't even need the CCNRs.
Right, oh, right, to your point, because the owner built them and is renting them.
Yes.
Or condo-ing them.
Yes.
And the owner could pull that unit out and sell it, right? Somebody falls in love with it and really likes it. The owner could pull it out and sell it to Bob and Diane that have been there for 10 years.
Where my investment sucked, I'm getting rid and selling all of them. Yeah, I mean, I guess you have the potential for that happening.
So...
That might end up with the problem you talked about. What, mightn't it?
Yeah.
Less likely, yeah. I'll go along with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. All right. So what do we need to do?
We still have to open up some...
Oh, yeah, true, true that. Thank you, Blinda. So you're right, this is a public hearing, and I think we might have somebody who'd like to speak to us on this. So I'm going to open up our public hearing and take input for anyone who'd like to come up and speak with us on this topic.
Good evening. Johanna Alt, is this working? It's a little quiet. Johanna Altorfer.
I'm wanting you to speak louder tonight. I don't know why.
There we go. Let's, go again. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. Johanna Altorfer. So I, I have to say, I mean, I like the idea of tiny homes, but I think I agree with many or all of the things David is questioning about these, because it's really a blend between RVs and mobile home parks. And we already have this California law, Appendix Q, that allows this. And I researched this and I Googled it. And in the state of California, the cities that have these places, the tiny homes on wheels, I mean, originally, it just was tiny homes, and then subsequently, the wheels were added. And a lot of these tiny home on wheels parks or whatever were added for agricultural, in agricultural instances, because they needed more space, or like in San Jose for homelessness. And I think because this is such a new area and because it's, it's such a blend, and I really do agree, I think we have laws out there already. I mean, the mobile home parks, they do, they have community centers, they have barbecue areas, you know, community rooms, they have parks and playgrounds for kids. They have, they do have standards that they have to abide by. And, you know, and then, you know, are these, you know, once it's more than 30 days, they're a long-term tenant, and you have fair housing and HUD that applies. So there's a lot of things that go into this. And if we do something like this, I would only like to see it in commercial and industrial. And if there's anything in R1, 2, or 3, I would like to see it limited to one, perhaps petition to get two, if you're lot, you know, whatever, if you, if you do that and you're the, you know, the owner. But it concerns me to have little villages popping up potentially next to anybody's property here. And, and you have litter, you have lights, you have noise, you have water runoff, you have snow removal issues, you know, and our, you know, yeah, I just think there's the frequency of movement. You know, will the occupants be required to have a valid driver's license so that they can move it whenever they need to? You know, sequo, what happens with that? Is the owner and the property only providing the foundations and the hookups? I sent a letter on all of this back in, I think it was May, May 20th. And, you know, these are a lot of the concerns. And, you know, will windows be facing existing neighbors? I don't see any language in there about that. And I, I'm sorry, I missed all the R2, R3 conversation, because I've been not able to keep up on all of this. But, yeah, lighting, oversized load limits, rooftop decks, what's going to happen with rooftop decks and view into other properties? But I guess the overall concern is if you, if you move forward, I mean, I don't know why we have to push this so quickly here in Mount Shasta. There are other avenues, I think, with mobile home parks and RV parks and camping and Forest Service areas and all this other stuff. And, but if we do move forward with it, I would please ask you to just do it in commercial and industrial areas to start with, to see how it goes. Because I think neighbors need to feel safe in their, in their neighborhoods and to have constant turnover of people. Before I came to this meeting, I was just assaulted at my front door with somebody pushing the door down, and I had to have the police come. And it was really scary after I texted Jeff Mitchum the alert from the Siskiyou about the guy with the knife. And, and we have a lot of, you know, people that are, we already have a lot of travelers and visitors, and we, we, we need to feel safe in our homes. And, and this is our, our home too. And, and if somebody wants to have a tiny home on their property, maybe, you know, have one or two, that's fine. That's your own property. And, you know, we have ADUs and junior ADUs and all of that, that I would think would cover that. But if it doesn't, and you need something special, then, then by all means, do that. But I think we have existing avenues for these things. And it's very confusing that it's not clear that some of these questions can be answered. Is it, is it more like an RV? Or I, I would think that it would either fall under the RV or the mobile home park category. But it, you know, I'm all for more housing and, and, you know, and I love the tiny home concept, but you have to, you can't, I think you have to really think about it and look to see the other villages in California. Yeah, it's probably been...
I think, I think we are. Thank you. I appreciate your taking the time.
But please look at the other ones in California so you can see the application.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, yes, would you, go, please, it's a public hearing, please, public.
I lucked out getting to this meeting. So one of the things, I actually do agree with David as well. One of the things that I'll be doing to, or the proposing to kind of control this community I'm doing, is you have, make it an intentional community. So you have to sign, it's legal to do it, you attach it to the rental agreement that this is your intention to live in this community. And the reason I'm doing the Eugene is that I'm really targeting senior women who are, I've met a lot of them around here, just are really living on probably like $1,200 a month. I mean, it's, it's amazing. And so they're constantly moving, trying to get into other people renting rooms and houses and stuff like that. So the reason that I did the tiny home was that it's a home, it's not an apartment, and it gives you your sovereignty, where you don't feel like you're being warehoused somewhere. So you're in your home in an intergenerational way, and then to give garages where you could fit a car and stores, so you don't feel like you got to give everything up. So I am just saying, maybe with, if you have to have that intention and someone has to sign an intentionality of why they're in that community, then it would be more acceptable to the residents. But this is where I'm trying to be, before I even buy anything, try and be in step with the people in the community, because it can be the best idea, but if people don't want it, then they don't want it. So that's kind of how I would be trying to make it better for residents, is with an intentionality that you're signing, that this is the kind of community you're agreeing to live in. And it would be permanent and owned by the developer.
Thank you. Okay. I had a question. Oh, closing the public hearing, thank you, Blinda. We're a good team. That's true, we haven't had one for a while. And thanks to folks who, who are offering up their advice and opinions. So when we had a deed, if we had a deed restricted, deed-restricted tiny home village, tiny homes on wheels village, I guess even if people are coming and going, and these are deed-restricted, so they would come in and they would have to apply and meet the income requirements. So that still works regardless of the model? Yeah?
Yeah, new occupants treated like new resident, rental occupant of a Mountain View Townhomes, for example.
Okay, that's all. All right, team, it sounds like we're getting closer to where we want to go with this, which is restricting the R2 and R3 to developer, owner, developer-owned tiny homes on wheels that are subsequently rented, as opposed to the commercial zones where the tiny homes can be either owned by the developer and rented, or owned by the occupant and moved in and out. Am I characterizing this right?
So should we make two definitions? A tiny home village, which is developed and the tiny homes are owned by one single owner, and a tiny home park where the site is developed and the tiny homes are owned by individual owners?
I think we just need to make one restriction in the R-zone, because in the C-zone, it's could be, in any of the C-zones, it could be either model.
True.
Right?
I also would like to remind people there are cooperative ownership. So you have to be a little careful, because this actually lends itself to cooperative ownership, where several, you know, a group owns, not one person.
So that a cooperative ownership could be a model that would work in the residential zone? Because it would still lend itself to that permanence. Oh, sorry, I thought it was on do not disturb.
Well, I think that would be the same as...
Well, I just want to, I don't know whether it has to be phrased, I just want to know it's just not, it just needs to be...
Well, I think, in my opinion, cooperative owners would be in commercial only then, C1, C2.
If I, if I could, I think we're talking about something that's substantive enough that we can't condition this as your approval. So why don't I come back with, with recommendations to achieve that? I'd like a straw vote if this is the direction you want to head. If it is, I'll do that. And if not, then we'll move forward with it as, as proposed. There were some clerical changes, entered this into the record and so on. So I think, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So if y'all agree that we should reexamine ownership in R2 and R3, then let's, let's get, take a, take a vote, please, and direct me to do that, and we'll come back next month.
I'd say yes. Blinda, yes, yes? Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Then we continue the item, time certain, date certain, to next month.
That would be great.
July, July...
That sounds better than crafting this on the fly.
Yeah, I don't want, I wouldn't do that, no.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you. Once again, I think the team does it better together. All right. Then moving on to item eight. Oh, yeah, yeah. Moving on to item eight. Staff and commission comments. Does staff want to go first or last?
I'll go last, I don't care.
You'll go what, last?
Whatever, it's your, it...
Please, and then we might have something to say and we might not.
I have something to say, but go ahead.
Let's see, I just sent you all an email to clarify. You'll get, you'll get it in your inboxes tomorrow. I wanted to update everybody on the receivership process for, coincidentally, the public comment from earlier today. There's been no site control issued. City has seen no concept plans. The receivership process, by definition, by design, is out of the city hands, it's between the attorney who, and the broker who was awarded that, that relationship through the courts. Yes. And once site control, Julie is here to do a little forecasting and very early due diligence prior to site control. The city attorney did make a notice, an announcement at the previous city council meeting, that the receivership process was, was not complete and was likely to end with uncertain assignment, shall we say, to owner, of ownership. The previous owner is litigating, is pressing hard on losing site control. And so we need to, please let's stand by on, on that. I've had this conversation with, with Julie, and everybody knows what everybody knows. I wish I knew more. It's been in city attorney's locked box. I haven't been able to be a part of that. And we will announce, or the announcement will be made through city council channels and then correspondingly to you all. Let's see, what else? I did follow up on, I will say, there typically comments here during this period when you all weigh in on various things. We need to be cognizant of our assigned sideboards and responsibilities by the municipal code. You all, as citizens, have the right to file code complaints for overpruned trees in front of gas stations, for example. That said, I did check up on that, because it, you know, it is, the streetscape design is potentially, I don't know, relevant to your authority. So in any case, Ken says, tell Ellen to cool his jets. I didn't even say, I didn't even say who it was.
An exact quote?
Yeah.
So in other words, we're stuck with this pruning of our trees by somebody who doesn't own them?
Well, that's, I don't need to get Ken in trouble, I'm going to hear about this, but he'll, he's aware of it. And he has a staff and a crew, you know, that they, they do pay attention to... And, and he has a staff and a crew, you know, that they, they do pay attention to these sorts of things. So it's not unnoticed, it's just code enforcement, right? So that's that. So then the other, this is folding over into future agenda items. But I do want to give you a heads up that the noise element, the general plan land use element, the dark sky ordinance and housing element implementation are all on forthcoming docket. So I've got planning commission meetings forecast out over the next six months. And, and you've got a full agenda times two or three items per, okay? So that's to say that future me is going to need to prioritize based on that, which leads me to the fact that I have submitted my resignation to the city manager. It has nothing to do with my joy for this position and this city, it is entirely personal. I've got family issues that need my attention back in Portland, I need to attend to those immediately. And then beyond that, who knows what the future holds? So I can't do both, I can't attend to family and, and this. I, I spend too much time doing what I like doing here, so I can't, I can't do both, so.
When's it effective?
The next meeting here will be my last and my last day will be July 18th. We will have someone coming in, we did post a recruitment. We've got a couple of responses which look promising. We also have the potential to expand our contracting services to existing contracts to, to keep boots on the ground, so in, in office at least three days a week and then two remote days. And the, the two folks that are in that position both have very good and relevant experience, so. And they're familiar with Mount Chastis. So more, more, more on that later when, next month. But I just wanted to give you that heads up now. Been a pleasure to serve you.
I know. Oh, hopefully it's, hopefully the.
Bummer that you have family things that you need to take care of too.
Hopefully TRC is not on the list of candidates to help us get.
I'm not TRC, oh, that was the previous me? Yeah, no.
Yeah.
And that's all, that's, that's the next two items on your agenda, sorry, I jumped, so it's all you.
The next two?
Well, it's commission comments or staff comments and it's future agenda items, I kind of woke that into one.
Oh.
So you'll see me here next time, but after that, you'll see someone else. And those, those are our priorities. So you're, you're going to get some noise element, general plan land use element, the dark sky stuff. And then obviously this as well, so.
No projects that are?
No, the Eugene Sway project up there on Spring Hill is still, you know, lost in, in pre, pre-application process. I believe that the applicant is trying to get SEQA, some SEQA analysis done, and you may hear more on that. But, yeah.
And what about that, the affordable housing on Chestnut and Ivy, I said Ivy?
Oh, you mean the Mountain View Townhomes.
The what?
The Mountain View Townhomes, the 25-unit portable, yeah. That's.
Still floating around somewhere?
No, that's been, we have active building permits in now, we're reviewing. Yeah, so.
That's good news.
There was a monumental appearance today, which was the filing of the, of the lot merger, which took the vacated portion of, of Field Street and the, which was quick claim by city council a month ago to, to the developer to help provide some wiggle room for some, some wetland delineation and some drainage and some, some storm retention and so on. So that, that's a good thing. The site's not valuable to the city, it's undevelopable. And it, it will be maintained for reclamation and water and drainage retention purposes in a natural state, so, and maintained by them at their expense.
That's good news.
Puffing. That is.
You know, Jeff, what I really appreciate is I can call you day and night, 24/7, and you answer the phone. Thank goodness I don't do that, but nevertheless.
Your little face comes up every time.
Yours comes up on life, oh, there he is, thank you.
Okay, that was plenty. Other commissioners, do we have any?
Somebody keeps pruning the trees behind Valero.
Oh, trimming the trees, the Valero.
Curious, there's the tiny home group that was here a few months back. Have you had any more communication with them? Are they still moving forward with their plans?
They're waiting for this legislation to come to fruition and to then decide what to do. I, my plan in, in formulating a response at your direction is to reach out to them and ask them what their understanding of their market is here. Does it make sense to have a pure ownership model and a non-rental mobile occupancy, if you will? What would that do to the market? Would, would it eliminate it? Would it reduce it by a nominal amount? Don't know. In my experience, it would, but that's only anecdotal and it's frankly not Mount Chastis experience, so.
Anything else? Okay, well, I learned something really interesting when I was paying attention to the city council agendas. And that is that Dale LaForest prevailed in his lawsuit against the city and the Golden Eagle Charter School. On the, and the, I think it was the appellate court said that we should have had an EIR and the basis for that EIR was on the aesthetics. No kidding, super interesting, you can Google it, you can find the decision, you can, and see what they were talking about. So I think, yeah, that was a heads up, because obviously we all were very comfortable with their design and we were comfortable that it was a mitigated negative deck. So I think there's something that we probably should learn from this going forward. And Jeff, if you want to talk about that, that'd be great.
Well, you know, I think city attorney's perspective on this, which was conveyed at the council meeting, is I think the, probably the most germane. It, it really is that that objective, subjective standards are every city attorney's nemesis. And most of the concern was, could be measured objectively. Should we, could we have had objective design standards in place? So typically, the, the aesthetics, the discretionary approval or judgment over aesthetics, as set aside from mass form and scale, which is height and setback and shape, which all can be prescribed objectively, which you've done in the objective design standards. It's separate and distinct from separate, the discretionary and subjective opinion on what constitutes aesthetic value. And it's really hard under SEQA to understand, to quantify and mitigate aesthetics. Right? So most city attorneys will just say, well, it's a crapshoot. You're going to get a judgment here and a judgment there and a judgment here and a judgment there. When in fact, most judgments are, fact-based judgments are process only. To your point, yes, I wasn't here, I don't, I didn't look at the record in depth. But typically aesthetics are view, view shed related and it has to do with height and blockage of views. And.
And that's not what this was.
And it certainly does not have anything to do with someone suing over the lack of a mountain village theme and prevailing. So all that to say, objective design standards really has a binary choice to make around a project's fit or not fit within the context is really the direction to go. So I would suggest that, that you expand in the future the objective design standards to include a commercial component. Because the ones you approved are residentially based only. And otherwise, we're still going to be in that state of, of, of having a discretionary and subject to SEQA. And not objective and ministerial and therefore exempt from SEQA. So that's the threshold.
I know, right? Yeah, well, thank you. Your advice is, on that is appreciated. Unfortunately, you won't be here to help us through that.
He will be back.
Oh, yeah. I shall return.
Resolve, you can resolve that in like six months and roll back down here.
There might be another planner here, you can't just dump your.
Well, it could be this interim. We can have an interim planner. I think interim planner seems fine. I think there's, we can work around this.
I think he's got a, he's got a life.
Yeah, sadly. Okay, sounds like we've really discussed future agenda items completely. Anything else, commissioners? All right, then I'm going to adjourn our Mount Chastis Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, June 17th, 2025.
Until when?
Until our regularly scheduled meeting in July, whenever that is.